Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meet, the special meeting of October 20th.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Stiller?
Aye.
Mr. Kipper?
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of October 20th, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Stiller?
Aye.
Mr. Kipper?
Aye, Heidi.
Good morning, Heidi.
Financials today include a revenue certification for the permanent lease pre-settlement investigation fund for the 2015 payroll advance, supplemental appropriations for the Corbett Court Special Projects Fund, and Juvenile Corbett Court Computerization Fund for the purchase of check and key access equipment, travel request for the Common Police Court and Department of Jodhpur Services, contract for Kent Mark's Home Improvement and the Thompson Township Community Center Parking Lot Project for the Office of Community and Economic Development in an amount of $43,000, payment to Nawaka for the 2015-2016 duty allocation of Commissioner's and Engineers Office in the amount of $25,418, payment to Kent Mark's Home Improvement for the Thompson Township Community Center Rehabilitation Project for the Office of Community and Economic Development in an amount of $47,041.90, and payment to Jogle Mechanical for the purchase of a three-ton train rooftop unit for building number two at 470 Center Street in an amount of $10,350.
And we've, uh, we're able to take action on the, the you and I talked about through the report?
Yes.
So, so we can approve that and still?
Hold the check.
Okay. And we're gonna be able to get verification on the juvenile court in terms of that being an appropriate check too? Matthew's one?
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I didn't know, we didn't know if that was a follow-up.
Right.
If that was a catch-up.
The payout.
The catch-up or not.
Wow, sometimes.
With those, with those two exceptions, I'm okay.
I will move to accept this with those exceptions noted.
Second. Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Stiller?
Aye.
Mr. Kipper?
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. You recovered?
Recovered or not? She called me yesterday, I was like, "I thought you were taking the day off." She's like, "No, no."
How was your husband? He was a nice guy.
He is a nice guy. He's a, he's a cool guy. Um, so today we have a couple things on the agenda. Uh, the first is, we had advertised for a housekeeper, we had had multiple interviews. We also thought it would be a good idea to just interview some companies as well. Um, and it turns out that one of the companies, um, that we interviewed, they did submit a quote, a two-year quote for us, Brenda Siler, she also does some other work for the county as well, very good references, um, at $12,000 per year, and that actually is a cost savings for moving forward and hiring a part-time person as well. So this will give us five days of cleaning, um, primarily for the Chardon Senior Center where there's a lot of traffic. It's just really, it needs some attention. So, we'd like to proceed with a two-year contract with the cleaning company and the hiring.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and execute service contract agreement with Brenda Siler to perform custodial services four nights and one weekend day per week for the period November 1st, 2015 through October 31st, 2017, in Mount Natchez, $24,000, $12,000 per year.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Stiller?
Aye.
Mr. Kipper?
Um, the next item on the agenda, agenda is regarding my, um, Assistant Director. Um, I came to the Department on Aging having an Assistant Director who works part-time. Uh, that has been very difficult for me. Um, it is difficult when you need someone to help you, um, each day, and they do not work eight hours a day, and they do not work one day a week. Um, so I did speak with Kathy about why she is part-time and, and if she would be willing to go full-time, and she is willing to go full-time, and I certainly could use the assistance, uh, each day to help share some of the duties that I'm currently doing. I'd say my typical day starts between 6:00 and 6:30 and ends about 6:30 as well, so it would probably, um, allow me to work a few extra hour, less hours, I think, as well.
Okay.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve an increase in hours from part-time, 29 hours, to full-time, 40 hours per week for Kethella Assistant Director to be effective November 1st, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Stiller? Mr. Kipper?
The next three are regarding adding staff to, um, some of the credit cards that we have. We've had three newer hires in the last six months, Christine Bacon, Kristen Bibby, and Ed Shortbridge, um, and I'm asking that they are placed on the BP gas card as they do use our vehicles. Number seven is specifically for, um, Ed to be on the Maintenance Department Home Depot Commercial Credit Account. He is our new Maintenance Coordinator, and, um, in total, number eight, that would put myself, after that, that's in Edward, um, on the Maintenance Home Depot Commercial Account. I did speak with Glenn about it. He has a letter.
He's committed his paperwork. That's why it's a...
This is a goofy question.
Yes.
What is your audit process for the credit cards?
Pardon me?
What's your audit process for credit cards?
So, we really, well, what we do is we turn in the receipts. It depends if it's for gas, so we, we keep track of our mileage for each trip. Um, so we have our mileage, and we also have accounts with, uh, BP, Western Reserve. We bring in the receipt. Joanna, who is in Charter Transportation, will check the mileage, check the purchase. We have the BP card, we sign off on it. Um, regarding the, um, Home Depot account, um, we take out a PO prior to going to Home Depot with the list of what we're taking up. Another peer checks in the list when the employee comes back with the items, and then it goes to our fiscal officer, who then looks it over, and then I look it over before the Auditor's Office does.
Cool. Okay, thanks.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the application for authorization to permit the use of county credit cards for personnel policies 7.11, Form ORC 301.272, include Christine Bacon, Kristen Bibby, and Edward Shortbridge on the BP, TNC Giant Eagle, Giant Eagle Fleet Services, and Western Reserve Cooperative Cards with a per month amount of $2,000. The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve the addition of Edward Shortbridge to the Maintenance Department Home Depot Commercial Credit Account. The Maintenance Department is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the updated application for authorization to permit the use of county credit cards for personnel policies 7.11, Form ORC 301.272, to include from the Department on Aging Jessica Bolt, Robert Devitts, and Edward Shortbridge on the Home Depot Commercial Account with a per month amount of $3,000.
I'll make those. Second.
Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Stiller?
Aye.
Mr. Kipper?
The next on the list, um, you might wanna have a little bit of discussion today. It's regarding our West Giaga Senior Center. Our current lease is up the last day of January, um, so we did have to put out requests for proposals. Uh, we did so by posting in the Maple Leaf, Commissioner's website, as well as in the Chesterland News. Um, we did receive five proposals, uh, in return, uh, two from Metzenbaum, one from Orchard Hills, one from Petronzio Management, and one from West Giaga Plaza LLC. Um, the lowest bid, uh, for zero dollars, uh, was at Metzenbaum, however, it was entirely shared. There was no dedicated space, and the programs would be inclusive with the folks who attended Metzenbaum, um, and that was something, we were looking for dedicated space, so that was removed from the process. Um, then that placed Metzenbaum's, uh, quote for dedicated space, the highest amount at $69,000 a year. So we eliminated that one. Petronzio Management, um, came in at $48,000 a year, however, um, they did not have the minimum square footage we were looking for, so we did remove that. Um, that left Orchard Hills and West Giaga Plaza. Um, Orchard Hills came in at $31,200 a year excluding utilities. West Giaga Plaza came in at $46,800 including utilities, um, except for sewer. Once you got the sewer bill to the West Giaga Plaza, it's about $48,000. Um, I did call Orchard Hills, and I did ask if they could give me a quote inclusive of utilities so that I could compare apples to apples, no pun intended. Uh, and, um, it was about $49,100. So the prices are very, very close. Um, so it kind of boiled down to the bus space. So we spent some time touring the West Giaga Plaza, as well as Orchard Hills. Um, the West Giaga Plaza offers a little over $7,000 square feet in one consolidated place. Um, it has very flat parking lots. Um, you know, I, I took some of the advisory board members through the spaces, um, as well as my staff. And, um, at present, we do occupy two buildings at Orchard Hills, and that has proved to have some difficulties and inclement weather, um, staff going from one building to the next, as well as the seniors going from one building to the next. Furthermore, there's a bit of a slope on the skate at Orchard Hills. Um, the West Giaga Plaza gives us the opportunity to have dedicated exclusive use, uh, with exception to three days per year, trick or treat at night, there's an annual meeting of Chester Township, and Santa passes out gifts to the children. So, other than that, there's no setup, tear down. We can just leave the building, it has its, um, whereas at present at Orchard Hills, we are spending a lot of time breaking down on Fridays and putting all of our tables, chairs, objects away, and reset it up on Mondays. So, um, after multiple tours and speaking with my staff and advisory board, and they are recommending to move, um, and pursue the West Giaga Plaza, um, a bottom beyond that, uh, two over three years instead of two, um, this is going to be quite a move, uh, and we would like to pursue a three-year lease. Uh, West Giaga Plaza would hold the price same for three years, um, and not increase the prices. I did get a three-year quote as well from Orchard Hills, and, um, they would only increase the price by two percent and reevaluate the utility costs. So, uh, the prices are relatively close. Um, if this is more about floors, ceilings, walls, parking lots, this is about a facility. Um, no reflection on how kind and courteous we've been treated the last number of years. The Piattersons at Orchard Hills, they are lovely, they have accommodated seniors, uh, they've accommodated my staff, and they're exceptional people. But the facility at West Giaga Plaza would better serve our programming needs.
Uh, you mentioned, at least run through the end of January.
Yeah.
Uh, we, assuming we vote for this and approve this today, what's the time, uh, timeline on the whatever amount of renovation or improvement has to be made to that? I mean, I, we walked through that facility a couple months ago, or something?
I think, um, way back in June, we walked through a, a number of facilities, and then we've walked through, um, since October as well, just with multiple trips.
Yeah, and I, it...
But yes, there, there will be some renovations.
There were some changes that, that were minor, I thought.
Correct.
But, but what's, what are they telling you?
Um, they, they said 90 days to complete all renovations, so that would take us to...
The end of January, I mean, but you did math.
Pretty tight timeline. But, um, but they said they needed 90 days. What they also did say at the West Giaga Plaza is upon, um, accepting their proposal, we're welcome to start slowly bringing things over, so we do not have to have some one grand moving day in the middle of winter. Um, you know, they said we can slowly drop some computer lines, or bring some tables, or some desks, as they're even in the renovation process, because the renovations are minor. They're putting in two, uh, additional handicap accessible bathrooms, um, and they would also be, um, moving a wall out to create a little more room for a kitchen. Right now, it would be kind of tight working quarters, so they're willing to push a wall out to give us more space for the kitchen. That's the extent of their renovations.
Effectively, we're gonna have, we're not gonna have a, a window where we don't have a facility, uh, for a week or two, we should...
That is, that is the plan, but, um, you know, sometimes, sometimes things happen. Um, you know, certainly in our current lease, there, there is an option there to go month to month, so, um, if there was a hangup, you know, we would certainly engage in dialogue with the Piattersons to see if a month to month was an option, if there was an issue with the, um, renovation process.
Of course, you've already moved your stuff over, so, I'm not even just...
Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'd actually like to ask, ask a couple of questions, but, uh, I was thinking about in terms of timing and so forth, and I, I was, I toured the facility, it's a nice facility, and so on and so forth. My biggest concern right now is, I don't know how this fits with the overall strategy plan going forward, and you and I have talked about this, I'd like to see a longer-term plan. Is this facility, how does this facility fit with the plan? What is the take on the citizens who are utilizing this, and/or the citizens of Jodhpur County related, generally speaking, using the senior citizens and all citizens for that matter? And so I don't know how this fits with the big picture. So we're making a three-year commitment here, and I have not seen a plan that says this is how this fits with the plan. And so that's my concern at this point. I'd rather see a two-year contract versus a three-year contract personally, just so we're not locked into a longer-term thing with this, not knowing anything about the plan. The second concern that I have, or thing that I'd like to see, um, is the contracts that we're signing. I don't know what the termination agreements are.
We don't have a contract in front of us today, that's a separate step. Once we accept this proposal, uh, we put the contracts together with both of our legal parties, and that way we can address things such as snow plowing, we, we typically have a 30-day out clause from either party.
So in accepting this proposal today, are we committing to this facility, or is this just saying...
We are going to pursue a contract with this facility. We are...
Yeah, until we sign the contract, we don't have a commitment with them. This accepts moving forward to create the contract.
I think...
Clarification?
I, I think, well, based on my understanding of the process, it's a fairly strong commitment to go forward. I mean, there's always a chance in the contract negotiations, something could come up, I suppose, that could change that, but, you know, it's, this is really the step where you decide this is how we want to go, and then we sort out the con, contract and make sure it gives the county as much protection as possible.
Yeah, you know, my position is, is, I mean, you've got your advisory board and your people within the Department of Aging that do this every day, and, and are looking out for the best interest of the organization and the members that, and the people that support this, so I'm gonna support whatever, you know, your organization feels is, is best for the, for the, you know, for the people that use the facility.
As far as a, a larger plan, I mean, in my, in my annual report at the annual meeting, I mean, it was discussed that, you know, the attendance at, in the Chesterland site is just, uh, very few behind Chardon. Um, and we, we certainly need something there. Uh, we are maxed out in Chardon. We are out of space. Um, so unless there's a plan to find another facility that could host...
Well, there were a couple...
A lot of people.
We, we had talked about a centralized facility, we, we've talked about a number of things, and, um...
No, it's a, it doesn't exist.
And so I, I just didn't know from a, like Ralph, I, I, you know how much of a supporter I am of you and your staff in the Department of Aging. But I don't wanna make, I'm asking these questions because I wanna make sure we've thought through this, and if this fits with a longer-term plan.
Um, I would say certainly if it's with a longer-term plan, we, we, we need to sit down and discuss Chardon being maxed out on space, um, and how we're going to handle being maxed out on space from Chardon, you know, what are the different options? Um, and I think that that will evolve into a three-year, if not plan to make some decisions.
Where's the Chardon facility you're talking about?
Across from the hospital.
Yeah, it's down on the...
Me, pardon.
We're not about a facility in Chardon, because I...
Chardon is a...
For, for a...
I was gonna say, this is really Chardon.
Our, our main site. You know, we, we are maxed out there. Um, so we certainly need to strategize a plan where we are not...
I don't disagree...
Maxed out, and we can accommodate the seniors in the community.
I don't disagree with, you know, future planning and trying to come up with a grand scheme, but that's, in the two years that I've been here, uh, that's been talked about, and I don't see that going forward, like with bricks and mortar or something, in the next 18 months to two years, and if we have the opt-out clause, and something does miraculously happen, then we exercise that. Uh, but, but, uh, you know, that's 36 months, and you'll blink, and that'll be gone.
It does go by quite quickly. It does go by quite quickly.
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, I, I'm in favor, but when I saw the, 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 the building, and I'm certainly not gonna say that I know what you need facilities-wise, but it looked to be safe, and I'd say clean, but that is a relative term. I mean, they, they didn't have junk in there or anything, and that'll be, they, the owners were very friendly and accommodating when we, when, when we walked through it that morning. Uh, so I...
I just think, I think, you know, the, the centralized location is what...
There are some...
I mean, it's, you know, the Patterson facility, beautiful.
Centralized location in Chesterland.
In Chester, yeah, it's right in the center of Chester, so I think it's gonna be more accessible to more people.
And I, and I know there's been a dialogue about a central location, maybe to combine senior centers. If you find that building, like, to 15,000 square feet, let me know, I'll take a look at it, but I mean...
Based on what we know today, I think going even for three years with an opt-out clause is a prudent thing to do.
But I mean, and, and I like the facility, and, and this is a healthy discussion, but we don't need to have a facility that's built, and we've got money that we put into these various separate facilities. Consolidate that money, and then let's talk about building a facility someplace that meets your overall need.
Yeah.
That's part of an overall strategy. I don't know if that's...
And I, I think that's a great strategy.
I don't know if that's the right answer, I'm just saying that we had at least been talking about it.
I, I think, I think we should put a lot of things on the table and, and attempt to have a long-term plan, um, you know, and, and as far as you all, I don't know what your long-term plan is, as far as the county and building anything, or what land you have, or where you'd wanna build, I mean, I think that's just a, a large county-wide discussion, and I would love to put a lot of different options on the table and come up with a three to five-year plan. Where do we wanna be in three to five years? Because in the last 12 months, the number of attendees at our senior centers grew 10%. So, as, as the number of folks in our community age and access our services, we are gonna get more crunched on space.
Is Sandy gonna do that?
I hope so.
Sandy, you gonna be there with your boxing gloves?
Can stick around, Sandy? Oh, sure.
Have you ever boxed with her?
Yeah.
She's tough.
I'm gonna do it.
Well, I haven't boxed with her, I was hitting her hand, or...
Thank you, Blake.
Yeah. Yeah, I was hitting her hand, and she kept yelling, "Hit me harder, hit me harder," and I'm going, "That's all I got." I'm no man, that's it.
So I do believe to str, even strategize, and, and if you want to even entertain consolidating or looking for land, et cetera, I don't think that would ever be bought or built overnight. I think that would be over a course of period of years, so that's why I feel very confident on a three-year lease being the right decision for...
Well, I'll, I'll support this, but I would like to sit down with you, and it's not our place to plan for you. You've got a whole organization, staff board and so on and so forth, it's great to plan. We just approve it, look at it, and see if it makes sense, within the context of what we get to approve for, so, so, okay.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board accept a proposal from West Giaga Plaza LLC, under the recommendation of the Aging Advisory Board to release space for the West Giaga Senior Center for a three-year period in the amount of $46,800 per year, which includes rent and utilities excluding sewer.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Stiller? Mr. Kipper?
The next four to release the bid bonds, or, excuse me, the performance bonds for, um, the home care providers for last year, as their, um, duties have been completed, and, uh, we have to pay them out.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board release the bid performance bond for chairs, companions, home care LLC, for the homemaker and personal care services for Jodhpur residents aged 16 and over, as all specifications have been met.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board release the bid performance bond for fall care LLC, doing business as home instead senior care, for the homemaker and personal care services for Jodhpur residents aged 16 and over, as all specifications have been met. The Department on Aging is requesting the board release the bid performance bond for family tree home care services LLC, for the homemaker and personal care services for Jodhpur residents aged 16 and over, as all specifications have been met. The Department on Aging is requesting the board release the bid performance bond for UH home care services for the homemaker and personal care services for Jodhpur residents aged 16 and over, as all specifications have been met.
I'll make those motions.
Second. Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Stiller?
Aye.
Mr. Kipper?
Just, um, since we're not really signing anything on those, is this the kinda thing that could fit into our administrative, um...
Yeah.
Cleanup, so to speak?
Yeah.
Because I would like to see us do something on that, so we can get some of the stuff off our back.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Nice day.
All right, you too.
Hi, Joni.
Good morning.
Morning. Hi, Joni. Good, good. Good.
This is one of our subject clients, um, infrastructure loan provider, and, uh, unfortunately, we lost the home. And it was foreclosed, um, we have been in negotiations with the lender, and, so this is the settlement that we reached, $5,000, the original, around $7,400. So we think that we lost, but we retained the bank. So I'm asking for our commissioners to sign that, from releasing the lease, so we can send it to the bank, and they can move forward.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute a satisfaction of mortgage for Christopher A. and Colton Lewis for property located at 1633 Leggett Road, Napa. The settlement has been reached for payment in the amount of $5,000 with the lender, who previously foreclosed on the property under the Jodhpur County Infrastructure Loan Guarantee.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Stiller?
Aye.
Mr. Kipper?
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you lose a few, I'm...
Yeah.
Yeah. I was all set to be full, and now, um, I had a resignation. This is one of our, the number 15, that's one of our new hires. She, she didn't, she only made it one paper.
Well, you're, must be, huh?
I know, I'm strict.
You're a tough person. I could see that over the weekend.
Yeah, she, she can't do the job, so this is better to, why waste time and money and our training and all that? That's the first one.
The County Home is requesting the board accept the resignation of Victoria Schumover, Part 10, attendant number 1504-1, to be effective November 2nd, 2015, at a rate of $10.47 per hour. After the successful completion of a 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $11.2 cents per hour. The County Home is requesting the board approve hiring Elizabeth Rich, to position her part-time attendant number 1504-1, to be effective November 2nd, 2015, at a rate of $10.47 per hour. After the successful completion of a 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $11.2 cents per hour.
I'll make those motions.
Second. Mr. Rea?
Aye.
Mr. Stiller?
Aye.
Mr. Kipper?
Thank you.
Good morning.
I saw my paper. Here. Okay. If you lose a few, I'm...
Yeah.
Yeah. I was all set to be full, and now, um, I had a resignation. This is one of our, the number 15, that's one of our new hires. She, she didn't, she only made it one paper.
Well, you're, must be, huh?
I know, I'm strict.
You're a tough person. I could see that over the weekend.
Yeah, she, she can't do the job, so this is better to, why waste time and money and our training and all that? That's the first one.
The County Home is requesting the board accept the resignation of Victoria Schumover,
Mr. Phil.
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Aye.
Both 16 and 17, both of these people are, they have a lot of experience. I think in changing wage, wage scale, I can't, I can't talk enough about that. Really changed how we look at, so it's, it's really good. Both of them are experienced workers.
We want to do the two of them together.
The County Home is requesting the board approve hiring Kiri Yancey to position a part-time attendant number 1504-1 to be effective November 2, 2015, at a rate of $10.47 per hour. After the successful completion of a 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $11.2 cents per hour. The County Home is requesting the board approve hiring a local bridge to position a part-time attendant number 1504-1 to be effective November 2, 2015, at a rate of $10.47 per hour. After the successful completion of a 1,000-hour probationary period, the rate will increase to $11.2 cents per hour.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Mr. Irer?
Aye.
Mr. Phil. Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mr. Irer.
Good. Well, it's with great sadness for Jaga County, but much happiness for Ken Folsom requesting that you accept his resignation as of December 4, 2015, taking the job as the emergency manager, manager for California State Emergency at Monterey.
Really?
He wrote a nice letter, I don't know if the commissioner's in charge, the letter he sent, he sent a nice letter to his resignation, that he's enjoyed, in 14 years that he's spent with us, and all the, we taught him, and he was out.
He really did a nice job of documenting the transition plan, so he's really stepping up and being as helpful as he can.
Yeah, yeah, he is, he's, there's no, I, it's a substantial increase, and as Dick was saying, it might be a wash, but it's a new start for Ken. I think the weather's nicer, a lot nicer.
Well, that'll give him something to prepare for.
Well, that's, but he gets into that, no?
Yeah, well, that's part of the job, that's, it's kind of slow around here at times.
He's trading snow for earth, so...
We get a flood now and then, or a big wind, or they'll, he'll have a full plate working out there.
I wish him all the best. He's been a great employee and very knowledgeable, and he'll do well to the greater.
Well, he's going to the university environment, too. I think he's felt well on that.
Yes, yeah, yeah. California State University, and out there, I think their police chief runs things instead of the fire chief like he did here. Well, depending on the situation first, but they hit it off for a while, they pulled him out there and did an extensive interview, and when they sent a questionnaire out to all the people that Ken put his references, they also put down anybody he's ever worked with, and did an extensive background check, they did like 60 questions on him. So they flew him out, they gave him a tour, they went over all his duties, and he was impressed, and they were impressed with him, so I'm happy for him.
He's a very diligent guy. I mean, I, I knew before he came to the county, he was, he was a very talented zoning inspector and wise business officer for a period of time, and always a very diligent, hard-working guy.
Great. We wish him all the luck in the world.
The Department of Emergency Services is requesting the board accept the resignation of Ken Folsom Deputy Director of Preparedness to be effective December 4, 2015.
Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Irer?
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Aye. Mr. Phil.
I always wanted to do that.
What's that? Kind of open interview, too, but, and...
Did we enlist the sheriff to go and...
Well, the sheriff did advise me, I guess you had a security meeting yesterday with the courts? He says, "Ken, before you leave, we are going to have a NIMs class for all the elected officials, and we want you to teach it." So yesterday he sent out an email to all the elected officials, you know, stating your, my available dates for doing an elected official's NIMs class, and...
After December, we could do it in Monterey.
Yeah, we could field trip, transit.
There goes that, and now you got travel costs. Take the bus. Take the bus.
We'll have to wait until we're able to show up with that.
We can make that happen.
So I'm requesting that the commissioners grant permission to advertise, or I guess you would advertise, the board would, you pay for that, for the position of Deputy Director for...
The Department of Emergency Services is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of Deputy Director of Preparedness Number 1711, this position will have been posted until filled.
Make the motion.
Second.
Mr. Irer?
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Aye. Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thanks, I do. Call you a little bit later, too.
Okay. Sir?
Morning, Dave.
Morning, David.
How are you?
Morning, David.
How are you?
Good, good to see you.
Bring us a map for your education.
Could be in your drawer. Should need something right in your drawer.
Go for it, Dave.
Thank you. This is PPN 02-420976, located in Bainbridge Township. The address is 7040 Aurora Road, Route 43. And the owner is B&amp;B Lakeshore LTD, and this is Vince Fond Jr. out of Youngstown. Vince, a few years back, picked up quite a few parcels down here that, from the original development, who had some financial difficulties, so he's been doing a nice job, quite frankly, Vince has, in terms of finding some businesses for these vacant parcels that remain in this development that was known as the Shops and Marketplace. And the area we're looking at today is, consists of 3.67 acres, again on the north side of Aurora, a little bit northeasterly of Depot Road, relocated Depot Road. On the next page, kind of zoomed in view, you see Giles Road to the northwest, Steak and Shake is on that corner, and Aurora Road, obviously yellow, Depot Road to the south, and on the, kind of the northerly side, if you will, North Marketplace Drive, which is a private road. And that's how these parcels are accessed, I'm sure you'll come down there at some point or another, there are no direct driveways on Aurora Road. Target, let's see, is nearby, PNC Bank is on the, near the corner of Depot and 43. I hope that helps to orientate you a little bit, this is where this is. The next page, this is not enough to be aerial shop, but it's the latest we have on the county website.
Need to get one of those drones.
Yeah.
I have them fly over the door.
That was all, all that's good.
Yeah. Actually, that little parking area you see on the, kind of the northeasterly corner is no longer there, and actually, there's a mattress shop at this location. And then on the balance of this parcel, we'll have all these, all these, he's ready to pull the permits as soon as we get this plat recorded.
On the same parcel?
Actually, it's a split.
All these are grocery stores.
Next page. They're combining these plats? Is that what you're doing?
Splitting.
Splitting.
We're going to 3.6, yep, you'll see on the last page here, number four, to answer your question. The Sublot 3A-1 is about 1,5 acres and 150 feet of frontage, and that's where the mattress shop is now. And then on the other remainder parcel, the 2.1, that'll give you all these sites.
So they're splitting these for what reason?
So we can get a lease site going for all these.
They couldn't do it on one parcel? You know, financing two, two different buildings on one parcel, and then if you ever want to sell them, and...
So is this building not here anymore, you said?
That's a parking lot.
The parking area is not here.
I guess.
Yeah. It's, it's an old aerial shop, I'm sorry, but I'll bring in the drones next time.
Yeah, please.
Please don't say that, they're not insured.
Yeah, that's right. Comment on that. Get a step ladder and a, and a Polaroid or something.
Yeah, that's gone, there's a mattress shop there, and the other parcel will be the old. The oldies, I think, is about $18,000 square feet, give it to them.
That's what he's going to put in there, is an oldie, that is going to the planning meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the planning meeting, that you had the other thing going. Yeah, that's what I'm, I don't want to sound like an expert, I asked the same question, why didn't they do that well? Because in the future, they lease them out, and there's a property line, they finance one, and then build the other one, and get dual ownership, but...
So it's an oldies and what's on the other side?
A mattress shop.
A mattress shop, sorry, built.
When you go over and eat it, all these are steak and shake, and then you go over and take a nap. I don't know.
Okay.
But, yeah, Vince has more of a tendency to lease, he will convey, but...
What was the sense on the order of the planning board, no issues?
Oh, no issues, and Vince did a nice presentation, brought his son, and...
Yeah, he seemed very professional.
Again, he's, he's trying to promote more and more.
I mean, they're, are they the same people that own like the Target and all that, too?
He doesn't own Target, he owns the former flower factory.
Oh, okay.
That building, which it's a tough one to deal with, quite frankly, but he's had temporary uses in there, and then he owns quite a few other sites in, in this area that he leases.
A2, or it's B&amp;B.
Anywhere you see B&amp;B Lakeshore, that's Vince.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good. So I hope that helps you out in terms of understanding. And one other quick item in terms of utilities, we have the Avana with Aurora for sewer and water, so they'll be supplying that, and no new roads, obviously, we're just splitting the parcel, so...
Who wants the strip on the back side? You said that there wasn't a cut onto Aurora Road. Like, does he own the property up to Aurora Road, he's just using that to put a curb cut in there?
Uh, he's, he's got actually frontage on 43 Aurora Road and North Marketplace, and the driveway will come in off North Marketplace, not Aurora Road. No way can you put driveways out on Aurora.
Oh, if they know that thing, they don't like that.
No. They want all the traffic directed over to the traffic lights.
The Planning Commission is requesting the board approve and execute the refit of Sublot 3A for the Shops and Markets Station in Bainbridge Township.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Irer?
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Aye. Mr. Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Yep, good to see you.
You need a new shirt to sit in. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Michael.
So what do you think about the new Ohio director?
Number 21.
Your wise man.
We're asking the board to approve our contract with the Department of Transportation, on their elderly and disabled transit fare assistance program. That contract that we have been renewing every year, and I know we've been here, comes with the, in this case, the amount of $57,483. That amount represents the assistance they give us for the elderly fares and disabled fares that we provide for the citizens of Jaga County. Our normal fare is $6, the Indy fares are $3, the state recognizes that we may need some assistance when we move back. Usually, two to three years determine what our average might be, give me a number that they're going to say they're going to give us, and we'll do that number pretty much, unless we have an excess, and it takes more, I'll go for it, so... $57,000. They take my actuals, they're, they're about a year behind, they take my actuals from the invoice that I had submitted, right, and we have some requirements that we have to... Contract runs from July 1st to June 30th, previous year, this contract, from July 1st of 2015 to June 30th of 2016. And this amount, that is showing the world, requesting, as you guys have said, is from July 1st, 14th to June 30th, 2015.
So percentage of wine, you probably have 90% of your folks that are elderly, correct?
I would say, I'm not quite 90, but I would say about 72, 73%. Yeah, yeah. And many of them are with the senior program. We are picking up more of those type of elderly type office, more rides in general, than we have in the past years. Our rides, we like the senior center contract, those are kind of stabilized, we have some rides for rides, showing up in the general.
The Transit Department is requesting the board approve and authorize the president and the board to execute the how to permit transportation for that elderly and the basic transit fare assistance program, rank contract between the Jaga County Commissioners and the State of Ohio Department of Transportation, contract EHTA 0101016161, ending on the $57,483.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Irer?
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Good morning, gentlemen. Good morning. Well, it's with great sadness for Jaga County, but much happiness for Ken Folsom requesting that you accept his resignation as of December 4, 2015, taking the job as the emergency manager for California State Emergency at Monterey.
Really?
He wrote a nice letter, I don't know if the commissioner's in charge, the letter he sent, he sent a nice letter to his resignation, that he's enjoyed, in 14 years that he's spent with us, and all the, we taught him, and he was out.
He really did a nice job of documenting the transition plan, so he's really stepping up and being as helpful as he can.
Yeah, yeah, he is, he's got, there's no...
Well, that'll give him something to prepare for.
Well, that's, but he gets into that, no?
Yeah, well, that's part of the job, that's, it's kind of slow around here at times.
He's trading snow for earth, so...
We get a flood now and then, or a big wind, or they'll, he'll have a full plate working out there.
I wish him all the best. He's been a great employee and very knowledgeable, and he'll do well to the greater.
Well, he's going to the university environment, too. I think he's felt well on that.
Yes, yeah, yeah. California State University, and out there, I think their police chief runs things instead of the fire chief like he did here. Well, depending on the situation first, but they hit it off for a while, they pulled him out there and did an extensive interview, and when they sent a questionnaire out to all the people that Ken put his references, they also put down anybody he's ever worked with, and did an extensive background check, they did like 60 questions on him. So they flew him out, they gave him a tour, they went over all his duties, and he was impressed, and they were impressed with him, so I'm happy for him.
He's a very diligent guy. I mean, I, I knew before he came to the county, he was, he was a very talented zoning inspector and wise business officer for a period of time, and always a very diligent, hard-working guy.
Great. We wish him all the luck in the world.
The Department of Emergency Services is requesting the board accept the resignation of Ken Folsom Deputy Director of Preparedness to be effective December 4, 2015.
Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Irer?
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
I always wanted to do that.
What's that? Kind of open interview, too, but, and...
Did we enlist the sheriff to go and...
Well, the sheriff did advise me, I guess you had a security meeting yesterday with the courts? He says, "Ken, before you leave, we are going to have a NIMs class for all the elected officials, and we want you to teach it." So yesterday he sent out an email to all the elected officials, you know, stating you're the, my available dates for doing an elected official's NIMs class, and...
After December, we could do it in Monterey.
Yeah, we could field trip, transit.
There goes that, and now you got travel costs. Right.
Take the bus. We'll have to wait until we're able to show up with that.
We can make that happen, we'll do that.
So I'm requesting that the commissioners grant permission to advertise for the position of electrician number 2314 at the Merritt Road Garage internally for a period of 10 days, in accordance with the new contract agreement, no qualified candidate is found the position, will be advertised externally until filled.
Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Irer?
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
I'm going to make a suggestion, that is, we move 25 down, clear the deck on 26 through 29, what do you think? Can we do that? That we were not having?
It is your...
What's that?
Your, your next item is Jerry.
We can probably get through these pretty quick.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that they had enough time for number 29, that was why I did what I did. So if we want to do...
Well, we can do 28, and then come back, right?
Are you okay with that, Jerry? Okay.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board concurred with Newbury Township trustees and not requesting a hearing on a liquor license requested by Familias Daily and Fresh Market LLC located at 12399 Kingsland Road, Newbury, C New 2631437.
Shall move.
Second.
Mr. Irer?
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
Aye.
Mr. Phil.
I'm going to make a suggestion, that is, we move 25 down, clear the deck on 26 through 29, what do you think? Can we do that? That we were not having?
It is your...
What's that?
Your, your next item is Jerry.
We can probably get through these pretty quick.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that they had enough time for number 29, that was why I did what I did.
think we need that position, and that's also part of our ongoing strategy, you mentioned before, our process to.
Succession plan?
Yeah, incorporate myself on that right side, we have some folks that may be, so I'll make sure we're covered, we do effectively.
The Transit Department is requesting the board approve and revise job descriptions for the position of driver supervisor, number 2207, to the effect of October 27, 2015. The Transit Department is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of driver supervisor, number 2207, this position will remain posted on TELFEL.
I'll make those motions.
Second. Mr. Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
You're not going to Monterey, are you? You said you were saying, you know, when you eventually leave, I'm just saying, you're not, you're not driving him out there.
Well, we would drive him out there. I do get a magazine every week that tells me all the, there's a different transit line out there, and there's all the transit shops around the country out there, there's a lot of California out there, so you wouldn't do it there.
Yeah, but they're not as nice as here.
No, the county folks here are probably the best to work with that area.
Thank you, Kevin. Good answer.
Morning, Dave.
Morning. So, your predecessor was here yesterday.
Yes.
Looks good.
He's loving every minute of it.
He looks like he fit right out.
Yeah.
Just got his Arizona garb.
And.
His bracelets on, and.
Yeah.
How's he doing?
He's doing great.
Yeah, yeah.
He's doing Hummer tours and Jeep tours.
Oh, wow.
As an employee, he drives the trails and he just loves it.
That's very neat. Yeah, he's worried they're gonna make him the boss, so they just tell him, he's bringing customers in, and it's like, I think they're gonna, but I'm not doing it, and so, you already said you were gonna wait a year before you did anything.
Yeah, you're already.
You're waiting a month.
Did he tell them? He needed a month and a half.
There's a lot of waste management jobs out there. He's to make a wrong turn, lose some people for a half a day, and then they'll reevaluate my.
That's right.
The item on the agenda here is to advertise for electrician, this is a position that is available, is because of the passing of Keith Baker, which is the, filled that position, and according to our union contract, is a union position, so we'll advertise internally for 10 days, and if we don't have anybody, then we'll advertise externally.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of electrician, number 2314, Emerit Road Garage, internally for a period of 10 days, in accordance with the union contract, if any, no qualified candidates found, the position will be advertised externally on TELFEL.
Make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
I'm gonna make a suggestion, that is, we move 25 down, clear the deck on 26 through 29, what do you think, can we do that? That we were not.
Is your.
What's that?
Your, your next item was Jerry.
We can probably get through these pretty quick.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that they had enough time for number 29, that was why I did what I did, so if you want to do.
Well, we can do 28, and then come back, right?
Are you okay with that, Jerry?
Okay.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board concur with Newbury Township Trustees and not requesting a hearing on a liquor license requested by Familias Deli and Fresh Market LLC located at 12399 King Monroe, Newbury, CNU 2631437.
Shall move.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller? Commissioner's Office is requesting the board concur with Thompson Township Trustees and not requesting a hearing on a liquor license requested by Heritage Hills, R. D. Park LLC located at 6445 Wedge Road, Thompson, CNU 3786488.
Shall move.
Which class is that license?
It's a C1, C2.
Okay.
Which is new? Both of these are holding new, Familias is also a C1 and C2.
I did make a motion.
Aye, second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller? Commissioner's Office is requesting the board reappoint Joni Stusick as public official representative to the Jod County Community Action Board for a two-year term, October 1st, 2015 through September 3rd, 2017.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller? The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the discipline of a public employee at the Department of Water Resources.
Shall move.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
I'd like to be in there, and Jerry Morgan and Lou Berhany as well. It will probably be.
Probably be action when we return.
Yep.
Is that where, ready to start the video? The record shows 10:30 on cell phone.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board accept the disciplinary recommendation of the Department Director, Jerry Morgan, and to suspend without pay James Ryder, Operations Manager in the Department of Water Resources for five days for violation of the Jod County Personnel Policy Procedure Manual, Section 3 Conduct, Page 3.3, Number 6, will full misuse of county property, and Page 3.31, cell phones and health devices, pagers, digital systems, and other portable electronic communicative devices policy, and further approve and execute the Order of Removal Reduction Suspension and Voluntary Disciplinary Separation Form per ORC 124.34 for the five days.
I'll make that.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Mr. Spiller?
Does this work, Sam?
Oh, yes.
My kick grew legs, where'd it go?
I got pressed, like.
Um, I can ask again, I'm gonna send a submission in here, she's gonna do some stuff on it. The one I should have called her. 15-152, opposing State Issue 3, which grants a monopoly for the commercial production and sale of marijuana for recreational and medicinal purposes.
Make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Before I say yes to this, I want to make a statement, because I don't want this to pass, and for the public record, for people to know how important we take this, this Thursday, there's gonna be a session in which we're gonna have a group of county experts talking about Issue 3 and the detrimental effect if this passes to our county, and I think to Ohio and northeastern Ohio area, this is gonna be a horrible thing if this passes, and so we're passing this resolution to make a clear and strong statement to how much we oppose Issue 3, and so with that, I say yes.
If I might. Issue 2 becomes pretty relevant also, directly guards to this Issue 3, my understanding of issues is correct, so I think, for the record on the county, I'm saying that I, we need to vote yes, I suppose, on Issue 2.
There's, there's a lot of confusion over Issue 2, and.
Yes, there is.
Believe it or not, over the last couple of days, I've been doing a tremendous amount of homework on it, I tend to support Issue 2, I'm gonna vote yes on Issue 2, there are folks who think that Issue 2, changing the Constitution, which by the way, Issue 3 changes the Constitution, creating a monopoly, Issue 2, Issue 2 is very focused on, this is where people get confused, it's, it's focused on monopolies, oligopolies, I'm surprised that I said that correctly, and.
I just forgot that.
And, and those very self-interested parties, or with passing taxes relative to specific kinds of companies, and so it's a very, very focused thing aimed at monopolies, people have confused that to say that Issue 2 is a more general thing that doesn't, doesn't allow for citizens of the state to put an initiative on the ballot, that's not a true statement, based on the reading, and I've talked to two, three attorneys now, three attorneys about that, to include our state senator, and, and he concurs that that is specifically focused on it, but like that, Issue 2 is the only firestop we got, if Issue 2 does not pass and Issue 3 passes, we're gonna have to live with Issue 3 or find a way to take it out of the water, and so, you know, I tend to say yes to two and no to three, but there is a lot of confusion over Issue 2.
Yeah.
And, and there's a lot of conflicting information, as with all these initiatives, including Issue 1, by the way, which I oppose just personally, but there's so much confusion, and the big money guys, the, and I will call them cartel guys, are putting so much nonsense and misinformation out there on the street, that just confuses things so much.
Not just on the street, on television, on radio, or anywhere you turn.
We're, we're gonna have to just pray, and I say that literally, that the outcome of this is in a positive direction, from what I understand right now, the polling is neck and neck, so I was hearing at one time that Issue 3 was clearly ahead, the most recent polling that I heard yesterday from some folks was that it's pretty close, people are, in Ohio, are sometimes smarter than people give credit for, but there is a huge amount of outside money being thrown at this, and so, we'll see where it goes, Thursday night, I would like, and it's unfortunate the press isn't here, I plan on making a personal statement to the press after I leave here, we need to get as many people in that room on Thursday as possible, and pass the word as much as possible, I, I really firmly believe this is about the morals and ethics and the character of our state, and if this passes, it's not gonna be a good thing, so, anyway, that's more of a personal statement than anything else. So, thank you, Walter, for bringing that up.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the board move into executive session with their attorney to discuss pending and or imminent litigation and to obtain informational legal advice.
Shall move.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Will there be any action when we come back? I don't believe so, it'll be Attorney Todd Hutt, I haven't gotten any confirmation, I don't believe so, but I'm not entirely sure.